I'm not worried about hiring, that to me is one of those things that's kind of ongoing. We've handed that process off to make a decision. But the onboarding process to bring them up, get them up to speed and so on. Robin is obviously preparing a tremendous amount of information. But we're gonna have to think beyond that. How do we introduce them to the town? What kind of support are they gonna need? And things like that. And we could use your ideas on that, Robin. But I think we should...
Yeah, I think an open house. Open, open house.
It's a special task. It's not necessarily a huge one. But we ought to start planning it, because we're gonna have one probably in a few weeks. Less than two months.
Yeah.
And O'Donnell, it's amazing. Time's coming up fast here. But by the end of November is the way things are looking at this point. And so that's just September, October. Well, maybe three, but whatever. So, okay, we'd be putting up onboarding. I'm sorry, I'm using kind of a corporate term there, but...
That's okay, we use it here.
Onboarding new TA. And again, this is one of those Dick that we'll tailor up, taper off. And by the time we get to spring, it won't even be an ongoing anymore. It won't even be an ongoing. This will be something that happens. It's kind of a thunderclap of effort to help this person become aware of what's going on, support them in the ways they need as they get going. But we're hiring somebody who's gonna be pretty self-sufficient. And we hope that we won't have to put an extra effort into helping them figure out who they need to talk to and stuff like that. They would be able to figure that out. So I see this as a short term, potentially. Of yours here, Dick, which do you think is a new police chief? That is potentially urgent?
Yes. Yeah, they're kind of clustered all under here in number seven with several new people that are people that are leaving, that need to be replaced. And there's some other items that we had talked about that aren't on this list. Like IT facilities, possibly a planner.
Those are new positions.
New positions. That whole idea of what do we need for people and how should they be structured.
Yeah, I would like to say, as far as personnel goes, IT and somebody to assist personnel, system, because we cannot keep up. I can't do all the things that need to be done for personnel. So I've asked for, your town administrator can't because of... Let's just say, I've seen the extent to which there needs to be a person assigned to the tasks that are in there, that are outside, like filing, filling out forms. The town administrator cannot be, do everything in HR. I've asked, and I'm getting a quote for an HR audit. So we can go and check off what needs to be done with respect to the personnel policies. We're missing a lot of policies. And in terms of records management, it's a area of huge exposure to the town. Anything personnel, you can get sued for anything now. So attention needs to be paid to that.
We had an example recently in the Selectmen's Executive Session when we were dealing with the issue largely as the result of there not being a clear policy. And we chose to, we made a decision that had we had policy, we might not have had to have the meeting, we might not have accepted the money. We don't know. But the point is that those are the situations. That was a relatively small case. There are bigger ones.
I think it's lurking out there. I put a crossover between urgent and important because you're missing key documents in the personnel policies. And I don't know the extent of which, so that's why I'm asking for someone to audit it.
So there is the issue of things that we have to post. For example, you've got to post certain things.
I've asked Debbie...
Do you think we're there?
They're not posted. So I've asked Debbie to order them. They come in these days.
Oh my goodness, yes, it's standard stuff. You gotta...
Dick, you're right. We don't have them. We don't have them. They have to be posted in every facility.
Thank you. Absolutely.
So I've asked Debbie, and Debbie's got an interest in helping in this. So to the degree that she can be trained, because she's so intelligent and so capable, I strongly recommend the board, and this will be in my message, consider hiring someone more clerical to take your minutes.
That's expensive.
And less expensive, and to do some of the routine clerical work here.
To free Deb up to do some of this other work.
She's bright, she's intelligent, she's interested in human resources. And it is an area where you pay out a lot of money if anything goes wrong. And I've looked over those policies, and that is a whole project for one person to work on. And the town administrator can't do that all, because they're also doing budgets.
The other thing too is that all due respect to town administrators and the expertise that we expect the town administrator to come in. HR expertise in terms of laws and then wants someone is an additional whole scope. And so someone who is focused on HR, be it Debbie or whomever, if they don't come in with it, we'll need to focus on learning a lot more about that and being aware when we're training into...
The files are a mess. The documentation is all over the place. I don't even know where it all is. It's one of those things that needs attention. And exposes the town to a lot of money.
Right. And...
Civil rights, claims, you know...
Anything. Age, gender, anything like that?
I know.
If we're not clear, then it's a big problem.
So anyway, I've asked somebody that has done this work for me in the past to come in and give me a proposal to do an audit. So at least we know what we need to do.
That would be a start. So I put down personal audit here.
Yeah.
But the results of that might very well lead to something else. And we need to remember this goals document should be a living document. If this gets done, that comes off the list and maybe what we need to do immediately gets put on.
Yeah, and I think that's also more something for the town administrator. You're gonna wanna extrapolate here what the town administrator should focus on as opposed to...
It's definitely a key part of that onboarding is for us to be able to give clear direction as to what they're gonna be working on.
Exactly.
That's exactly it. And exactly, exactly. And the other one that I had as urgent is, now I have this in a few, if you're okay with it, internet security audit and update.
An update meaning the plans that come from that?
Yeah, you've got a screen door down below the water line in your chip. Do you wanna replace it? What we can afford, what we choose to do. But I think I was gonna put internet audit, internet security audit and update. Doesn't say what we're gonna do, but we're gonna take action to follow up on that. We already know there are a number of problems. Some significant, some not so, some fairly easy to fix, others take more effort. But we're supposed to get an à la carte assessment of what it would take to do this, the audit part, and then that'll help us with this.
Where does that actually stand, John? Are they putting together the quote, did you say?
Yeah, and I don't know what's going on. I don't know if there's a health issue or whatever. I've got a call in as of Friday to the marketing guy, Richard Avery. And I'm sort of expecting any minute. And I may have updated his expectations in saying, we'd really like to have it broken down into à la carte chunks. We have some grant funding that can do some of this, but given you're off the cuff and before, we're gonna want to pick carefully if in fact it's gonna take waiting until a town vote. Now maybe we can get Maya to help us out, we don't know. But let's find out what the numbers are.
There is a grant for up to $10,000. So I said, if we can get phase one, like do an audit, then that will inform how we go forward. So I thought that way we can at least try to apply for something.
But we know there are some major issues.
And the audit results would be in in time in order to plug them into the budget in town meeting?
Yes. I don't think the audit will take more than a month or so. Once they get on it, it will go pretty quickly. But first, we already know that the website is very vulnerable because other... Is it ClearGAP that did our website?
Civic Plus.
Civic Plus. Civic Plus. Dozens and dozens and dozens of their clients who have the same software package we do have been broken into. And they go into the same holes at the same time because of the way Civic Plus sets things up.
Is there something that we could do with them now, Robin? Relative to, I don't know, if they have this kind of a history? What does our contract say if we're vulnerable? Are there actions that we can ask them to take now?
I asked Richard about that. And he said, they can tell you a bunch of things and go do them, but they may not close the door all the way. He said, what we would do is come up with specific recommendations. And if you have the contract with them, we would suggest that you forward them as recommendations from your security audit. And that we would then ask, but they're gonna specify things at a technical level that we don't understand. Because they do some things kind of a lazy way that makes it easier for them to manage. But that's why they're having these problems. Now, we don't know for sure whether they've just yesterday closed the hole. Although many, many holes, but we don't know where they were at with that, so we'll see.
This is a little bit of... So what did you do after you understood that there were some holes in Civic Plus? What were your actions? If we know that there's a problem, we ought to be asking questions of them yesterday.
But we don't know what questions to ask.
So at least... What's that?
We don't know what questions to ask.
It could be that they do the basics that they did with other towns. At least do those.
Have you had any losses? And how did you handle those? And how are we not going to have those losses? I mean, if we know that they have been hacked into, so to speak, then we should be asking them, what's happened in those cases and how do we know that we're not being... It seems to me it's one of the things we should do.
What Richard said, since he worked on Summit New Jersey and their problem, which was Civic Plus, is one of the towns from a couple of months, a few months ago now. What he did is their IT had called up Civic Plus. Civic Plus said, yes, we're taking care of that, we're taking care of that, we're taking care of that. When Richard went back in after they said they'd done all these things, they had done some stuff he could see, but it wasn't the stuff that was gonna stop a professional. It wasn't gonna stop somebody who had the right tools. They didn't understand the security problem, so they couldn't fix it. So he said, what we do is we make specific recommendations. Don't change the functionality of your website at all, other than do authentication for certain kinds of things. But he said, we make them close certain doors. For instance, we're telling them exactly what version of software on what kind of server we have. So out of the tens of thousands of hacking tools that are out there, a hacker can go to, looking at all the possible targets, let me go to the one that, oh, I know exactly what I need. And he looks and he sees what the six most powerful tools are and contrive them. He's targeted his search immediately because he knows exactly what he has to break through. Whereas that can be hidden with a simple request. That's one of the simpler things. Because then they don't know what they have, how much time do they want to spend testing to see which one of their many tools will get in? That's a case of they don't realize that by putting that stuff out, it's causing problems and you're looking at their clerk.
It seems to me that in some ways...
I have some thoughts on that. Normally, I'd be happy to sit in and chat some more.
In some ways, what we may be doing is spending money, not that it's not... Spending money to help Civic Plus find out about what their problems are and fix them.
Well, it's only in Summit, they already identified and told Civic Plus what to do to close those doors.
Whether they're doing it for all their customers, because it's a big job.
But we can ask them to do what they did for Summit in New Jersey.
Because, essentially, yes. But I think we need to have this first to do that.
Hopefully, the audit is much more than the website. The good news in my mind, the good news is if they trashed our website, all the documents on our website were okay. The town will keep running. The gold copies of those documents are someplace else. Now, there may be some things that have been written on a webpage, a description of something that is not someplace else. But the documents that we're using are hopefully in our service here.
Actually, the worst part of it is not the websites, but it's the portals into people's emails.
Yep, exactly.
Because, you know, when you read about...
That's where they plug on something, yes.
Yeah, you read about people that say, oh, I won $10,000 in a lottery. And they'll click it on and then that's it, they're in and they...
The main message there is that we need to train and remind all of the employees who have logons that they need to be very careful what they do. And they do not do anything but government work on a government computer. Because as soon as you start doing some shopping and you go to something else and you go to something else, you opened yourself up to other places that could be dirty.
The sad thing is with 100 employees, if one makes a mistake... And what these hackers do is they go in and they set up shop and they get everything all set over the course of days or weeks.
Well, we do backups and there's stored documentation. Part of it is having the right protocol, which is, we need an IT person that can do that. But they can even, you almost have to have redundancy, because they can go in and strip out your electronic records.
What they do is they can take over ownership of our website. They can take over ownership of our systems. We would have to...
Which is two different things too, though. That's the good news.
I understand, but one could lead to the other. One could lead to the other. But the problem is that once they've done that, even if you have all the data, you're out of business for weeks or months. And that's the danger, because you have to get all the software reloaded. It costs tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars to get all the system built back up with all the applications. Then you can go put that data back on, but you've been out of business or working with paper for months. And now you've gotta pay the cost of transferring that paper to update the system.
Was it one of those communities was $17 million, is there estimated? They didn't pay the ransom where, and now they've got $17.5 million.
Atlanta turned down paying $51,000 in ransom. No question, no guarantee they would have not had a problem if they had paid it. But they've paid over $30 million as of two months ago. And they still aren't up and running. They're still doing paper. Parking tickets aren't getting paid, aren't getting collected.
So it's something that needs to be looked at.
Needs to be done. That's one of those things. So, and I wanna emphasize, Dick, I appreciate the conversations we're having. We're gonna go through this again and make sure it's the right list. So I'm trying to get the quick...
Let's get some stuff.
Yeah, get some stuff up there. So, town website, I have this here as ongoing. Comfortable on that? Okay. I'm gonna go down this list and just get your sense of where we're at. Financial forecasting, I had put down something that might go out 10 years. To me, this is important. I'm not sure it's urgent. And I'm not sure that we, the Selectmen alone, can do that. That's gonna be something that's gonna involve a pretty broad effort. It's gonna be a task force of FinCom, some Selectmen, I think, town administrator, personal agents, treasurers, and so on and so forth. Shall we put that up in terms of, what the best way to express it? Because you had something on that, Dick. You had improved five-year financial forecast model, long-term capital plan. I see that as very good. I have the same thing.
Yeah. Maybe it's an important area.
Let's put it here for now. So we're gonna put it... Internal planning. And I don't know whether, if we adopt this, a cost savings review committee would be part of this process or not. We don't know. But I'm gonna take your cost savings piece and put it in that bucket, so at least it's there. Is that reasonable? Okay. We can move it around, yeah.
You want to make it a separate item?
Yeah, we can do that too.
Most likely, it'll end up being a separate item.
Yeah, good, excellent. Next.
Yep. Collective bargaining, I kinda see this as, and this goes to your thinking, I kinda see this again more of the normal management of what, it's not a goal per se, we keep doing it.
I've met with them once, I'm meeting with them again.
Yeah.
The reason it's a goal in this case, off of the thought, is that it has 6/30/2020.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's gonna be on this year.
Well, it's a goal to get them all resolved before the end. Now, it may not be a key goal, but we have to ask.
I'm doing my best.
Because I don't remember having all of our CBAs resolved before they were due. We were pretty good in some years, we were pretty good. But we've missed, we haven't gotten them all.
Robin, have you begun on these others? Or are you working just on the reserve offices? Because all of the...
No.
The CDA's, police, firefighters.
No. What they will do is send something at the end of December, early January, asking to renew the contracts. Your TA has got to be ready for that. And I'm making a note of that.
That's gonna mean how we can support the onboarding and so on, make sure they're in.
I would agree with you that I think it's a goal. I think it's a big undertaking and we're gonna stay on top of it and it's good to keep it up there.
It depends what is there.
The goal is to see if we can do it before they expire. That would be my suggestion.
That's a nice goal.
But it's just a discussion.
Okay.
I can guarantee you that there are times it doesn't happen. A lot depends what your budget outlook looks like. And people wanting their fair share or issues that come up. So I think what you're going to want to do is meet with your TA in, you know, same January to review the CBAs and see what needs to be changed. So part of it is...
To know where we're going.
Can you have some notes with that already that you've identified?
Yes, I have a file on personnel I'm putting together for the new TA that says, has notes on everything. And also informa... And I've also started a file, things you should know. And it's got documents in there just so that they're aware, like for example, the TA bylaw. Just, you know, it's a couple of the board's policies, but things they should need to know. But I've got a whole file on personnel.
Good. So, sort of working off this list and we'll go check the other ones. We have Verizon contract negotiations.
Important, not urgent. I'm asking that you put together an ad hoc committee for that. Not urgent.
What? Ad hoc committee?
Not urgent, but important, you say?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, in other words, you'll create a committee, a long-range, let's see, cable advisory committee. Their only job is to renew the contract. And that's gonna be on one of your agendas.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's the next one. But you just form the committee, you get people in, and COBLO and Paige has an attorney that does all this. It's very formulaic.
I think she used, I don't think to drop, but there was someone that we've used in the past.
Bill Hewitt.
Bill.
Yeah, he's...
Who is it?
Bill Hewitt. So you're gonna get a recommendation.
Okay.
I thought it was a different name.
Yeah, there's a different name in there.
Bill's the one that did the last one.
Oh, he, did he do Comcast?
He was KP. Yeah.
Oh.
He's...
Okay, fine, I get it.
Going down this list, the next one, let's open. Town operational systems. My own feeling on that, and then just your thoughts. This is going to open up a lot of questions and may affect this, which will affect how we look at operational needs. To say nothing about the next, the elephant room that's not on this list, but is the idea of possibly creating a DPW or equivalent.
Yeah, I think this goal, the way it's written, is so huge.
Right.
It encompasses everything.
It's ongoing.
Yes.
Whatever you wanted to be.
Yes. You have to refine that a little bit more as to what we're focusing on.
Let's pick a chunk of it and see how it goes. Town technology systems. Let's start with the internet audit. I think that's the most important piece. And my inclination is to think, just because we can't do everything, time is God's way of keeping everything from happening at once, that may have to go out a little further.
Yeah, a couple of things I would say to that. The plan, the review that we did, has an awful lot in it from an operational perspective that the town administrator can take a look at. And there's a lot of low-hanging fruit there. It doesn't need to be up on our board, but it should be reviewed. The people took a lot of time to put forward those recommendations and there's a lot that can be done. There's a lot of good stuff in that.
Well, it also includes follow-up on the grant, the regional IT grant with Danvers.
And I think that's on our board. That one is up at a level to say, do we want to regionalize?
I don't even know what the status of that is. I just finally sent them through and said, we've been waiting for this document. That went out. So I think with respect to technology, there are two things going on, well, a couple of things, I would say, review the audit, maintain contact with Danvers to, on the progress of the regional IT study. And also, you might wanna bring in the internet security and update on that. In other words, under that, that's very expansive. But you could just chunk it out. Those are three things that come to mind on that.
If we have something that's a major initiative with this IT and regionalization, I think somehow it has to be a goal. If it's a major one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whether we achieve a goal or at least determine whether we wanna continue with it or something, it's to the level when we have, somebody's given us money or we've signed up for some money, especially other towns are involved. I think we have a responsibility to put it up there as a goal so that it's clear. We know we need to do something with this and the money we've been given.
Well, I'm just saying, under technology systems, you have several things. The internet security audit is urgent, but you also need to, whoever you hire needs to follow up and stay on top of that regional study and also how to integrate the audit into that.
Here's my thinking. I think this and fixes, they're gonna take probably through your tenure here. We're gonna be working on this. My guess is with conversation with the Danvers now, I'm not even sure who's carrying those forward right now.
I contacted them.
You haven't, okay.
I haven't heard.
It's gonna take time. I, my own guess is we wouldn't have an agreement until spring. We'll be well into the budget season. So my guess is that that would be something we would be looking for for the following year.
This particular study needs to be completed by the end of the fiscal year.
The study needs to be. I agree the study does. The specific limitations, so maybe in future years, but... So we do need to do, so this is a, this is gonna be a study among other things. Which, the document that you assembled, it's really kind of the cornerstone of the starting point. Downtown revitalization, we've got it right there. Sign bylaw, is that the ongoing or is that kind of riding on its own now?
It's something, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's getting a goal, getting a thing started, getting processed. We've done that. I would not put that down as a goal. It's something we better keep watching and make sure that it all gets done. But it's not a goal in the future, it's not a goal for 2020.
Glenn's sending out letters next week to the businesses along group one.
Okay. Yeah, the sign came down at Osterio and it's backed up again now.
And by the W's back up.
It was that flag that...
Or front flag?
That says open. That came down and now it's back up again. So I agree that is, that's an operational issue.
Yeah. It's very important, but it's an operational issue at this point.
There was one thing that we had in that for last year, it was review and possible revision of the bylaws. We never looked at the bylaws per se to see if we needed to review them. Was that something? I'm trying to remember now why the review and possible revision came up.
Well, there was a need, it was the...
But we never reviewed them.
But we've asked Glenn, and Glenn is not coming back with any things that he's had an issue with.
I don't think he reviewed them either, though. We never charged him with going and reviewing to see if anything needed to be changed. We asked him, could you enforce the existing bylaws? And that's what he focused on. After the letter went out, he then went to address which ones are in violation, I will take care of it from an operational perspective. But I don't know if that's still needed or what drove that in the first place, if we thought there was any issue with the bylaws.
Because there's, things were said, you know, we've got a problem with this bylaw, we don't know what the fines are. We knew all those things. It was a matter of the fines are over in this part over here. It was a matter of the fines are over in this part over here.
Okay, so it was more just an enforcement.
But it's still something that's worried and looking at when you're trying to enforce them, and you say, you know, things have really changed. Everybody wants to do this. The main thing that happened in the last change was the fact that you could have an open sign lighted in your window.
Okay, so I don't see any issue that we have outstanding right now. Something, of course, could always come up later that we could address, but right now there's nothing on the table that says we should be reviewing the bylaws for any change.
And it is the responsibility of the planning board.
You can always ask.
We can help them. Absolutely.
You could ask them to work with planning to review them.
Right.
That is not necessarily something you need to do unless you have specific concerns.
Two things that I have, I'm sorry, on yours, Dick, improved communication. I'd like to put that underneath here and be sure we're looking for other ways as well.
And I think we kind of opened the door a little bit today because of the website, not to do with the website, but because of the website, to begin talking about that sort of thing.
No, I think it's a very worthwhile goal, and I think there are things beyond just the website we could do to improve communication, but I think it's definitely worth having there. One of the ones that has been big is a question about transitioning to a DPW, where we have two department heads leaving, and there is a question whether there are efficiencies if we created a DPW under a single administrative structure rather than having two, if you count grade 2.5 groups and so on. And there are, I understand, pros and cons, there are certainly opinions on both sides of that, but there does seem to be a lot more sense among folks that have been talking to me that now is perhaps the best possible time for us to really look at it, because we do have two incumbents who are leaving from the leadership of each of those, and if we were to make a change, it would be the least disruptive, because we're still going to need the workers. I don't think it's going to get rid of any of the workers, it would just consolidate the administration.
Well, we have the GRC that has been charged from town meeting and as a subcommittee of the board to take a look at the structure, the strong town administrator or not, which naturally pulls in that question of organization structure. I think they are coming back soon.
Yeah, the 23rd of September.
Okay, with their recommendations. But your point is everyone trying to, these are right around the corner for some of these positions. There may be discussions underway about filling those, and I think we probably just want to pause until we get the recommendation from the GRC, have a chance to talk about it, before we permanently fill any of these open positions.
Glenn, I think, Robin, that's sort of the basis you've been going on. I wanted to have this meeting be an official public time when we said, it's a question, can we hold off creating any permanent for the short term?
Yeah, I had a discussion earlier with Lynn, and I said the board should formally ask that they take no action until they've met with you. They gave to me...
Wait, which board is this?
All of them.
Highway and Parks and Cemeteries.
Water.
Water, too, yeah.
That you have, would like to talk to them about forming a DPW in concert with some recommendations that the GRC had made a couple, a few years ago. At the most, my suggestion was that rather than replacing Dave immediately, that they consider hiring somebody as the interim, and, you know, paying him more, and then, you know, I can work out it staying in the union, because they want to promote from within. I don't know Gary Wildes, I don't know anything about him, but I think there needs to be eyes on this. You know, I don't know if he's the right person, or if he has the capability, or, you know, so before they go charging off to reappoint him, and Dave is retiring the end of December.
December, that's news.
Okay.
So I think that is urgent, if you want to discuss that.
It ties in with taking a look at any operational efficiencies. Are there ways that we can leverage these organizations working together? We also have the GRC that was charged with looking at that issue. We want to get that input.
Also, in terms of priorities, you know, you have all these little silos, and everything that they have is a priority. And so the board, as the town, the selectmen, as the executive board for the town, should be in a position to measure those various priorities. Shouldn't just have highways saying, this is highways priorities. Where does that fit in relative to all the town priorities? That's kind of the way I look at it.
The interesting thing, I've attended most of the GRC meetings. There's mixed messages that come out from different people, but there seemed to be a very strong message that, you know, what we have, it's, well, we're pretty good. And I think that's kind of the way it's going to come out unless somebody, because that's the way the numbers kind of came out and the comments kind of came out, unless somebody wants to try to cherry-mandar it around. That's about where it was on that. Now, that's not necessarily what the strong town administrator quote, but it had to do with those particular positions of boards that we have. And that's kind of the message that was coming out, including Board of Health, the one we have, because you can change those things, too. You can go ahead and elect Board of Health instead of appointing Board of Health. You don't have to have Board of Health, or select them to be Board of Health, all that sort of thing. But the messages were that people seemed to be pretty happy that we were functioning well with what we had. That's the kind of message I got out of listening to many of the GRCs, and a lot of them are taped, so you have some input on them if somebody wants to...
Who's on the GRC?
Who's on it?
I mean, are representatives from these boards on it?
No.
No.
You have...
Lou Ross.
Palace, which is his first name.
John.
John Palace, yes. And Roberta Zappienza, and Lou Ross. Two others that were on it have since come on.
Well, I just, I looked up their report the last time around, and I see in favor of it.
In favor of?
DPW.
Oh, so somebody's been cherry-mandering.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying.
Didn't that go to a town meeting, the recommendation years ago?
Well, this is from their 2012 report.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, fine. Yes, 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 yes. I thought you meant some of this GRC.
And part of the question, Dick, actually, this goes to your thing about finding cost savings. If this is going to cost more, then I don't think it's going to fly. If it would clearly cost less, then probably people would want it. Exactly, and we've got to do the analysis to figure out, and maybe some people have already done that, and we're just going to have to learn that, but I think there's also going to be a process of us uncovering information. That's why having some of these conversations in public. I know for a fact that sometimes you hear different things in private conversation than are said in public, so it'd be interesting.
I had a conversation with Lynn today, and I said usually when, on many occasions, it's when there is a huge faux pas at the DPW or the parks or the cemeteries that motivates people to do it after the, after the analysts have escaped from the barn. And all it takes is one of those, and then you think, why didn't we get it sooner? Because it's... Well, it'd be interesting to look, too, at the analysis that they're doing.
Right.
I don't know if they're forming opinions based upon what someone said in various departments, or whether they're looking at the numbers to say, what are we spending in capital? What are the budgets? What are the priorities, as Robin said?
Depends who you're talking to.
Yeah.
What they've largely done is interviewing people from the town who are involved in the various departments. That's what they have done, to see how they're working, what are the issues, what would they like to see done differently.
So they've interviewed people at the highway department?
Not so much the employees. This is the chairman of the...
The boards.
Board of Highway Commissions, the chairman of Water Commissions, and Board of Health, yeah, Cheryl, yeah. So they went through and talked with these people who are essentially running, in many ways, the town from their particular perspective and what they're doing, is there a better way, and what would they like to see differently? And you see, they had, they spent maybe the first month or so working on the sets of questions that they were going to ask. I mean, they worked real hard to kind of come up with something right, the kind of thing, okay, all right, now you're going to talk with them, I'm going to talk with them, and so they did all of these interviews and that, and they pulled, you know, a real census from the people who are running option for government. That's my take on it.
It's, to me, a little bit like asking the current senators what they think of Senate reform. I'm a little concerned that while that's an important perspective, it should certainly not be the only perspective.
No.
And so I'll be interested in finding out who else they spoke to, and when we ask questions, and we will be doing it in public forum, which they were not, even though we may have been there at the time.
We should make sure that, make sure the census is public, because, okay, but it's not as open as when we have our, not as many are watching it.
You should also talk to the town administrator.
Yeah.
The Board of Selectmen.
Exactly.
The accountants.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes.
And whether they have done that yet. Certainly has not talked to the Board of Selectmen, I'm aware of it.
Yes, they did. Not to the board, but to Mark.
They didn't talk to me.
Not to Mark. No, not to...
They just talked to Mark.
Yeah, just like they didn't talk to, they didn't ask the Board of Highway Commissioners to get together on a certain day.
They talked to Phil, and they talked to, like, is it?
Cheryl Mootson.
Parks and Cemeteries.
Oh, Steve?
Steve.
Mrs.?
Steve Mootson.
Yeah, okay, Steve Mootson.
And Mark. And I guess my attitude is, that's great, I'm glad to get those opinions, that's three people. We're serving 6,000.
I mean, you brought up a good question about...
They have, like, 20, 20...
Well, we'll find out, we'll find out when they...
But you brought up a good point. Are they following OSHA rules? Are they giving people the training they need there? Do they get, do they sign up for MIA tree-cutting training? Do they sign up for MIA close quarters training? I mean, this is something also, if we have a personnel assistant, they'll make sure they get that training. But if they aren't, if they are not doing these things, then that tells you something right there, that they're not appropriately administering those departments, because there's a lot of things...
It's a huge liability. If somebody got injured in the trench and they've not received available recommended training...
They have trench trainings.
Yeah, they have trench trainings, too, but I'd just say that was one example, you know, that was a seven-figure, eight-figure settlement.
I don't know if they reached that to other towns. That would be a valuable perspective as well. Towns who had them separate and then combined, were they happy with it? Did they realize savings and communication and efficiency?
Right.
Were towns that didn't decide to go that way, what was the rationale for it? To learn from the experience of other towns above our size.
But I do think it's more than just whether they think it's going okay. All it takes is one misstep, and you're in it for thousands and millions of dollars, as I've experienced. So I think that the questions need to be broader, or perhaps more wide-ranging. How do you feel about things? Oh, things are really great. Well, tell me what that looks like. Do you have a five-year plan? You know, are you succession planning? What kind of training do your people get? You know, not just like police off... Well, I had a good discussion with the chief today. There's basic certifications all officers need, but I asked if he gets, he makes sure they get LEEDs training, which is FBI training, and he said, yes, they do. That's a cut above. So the question is, you know, what kind of training these people are getting, what kind of certifications they have, do you monitor that? How do you monitor them? And not just that, but this personnel, this whole personnel issue, those trainings and copies of those should be going into the files, and there's no one running around. There's no one available to say, he, give us this stuff, tell us what your training program is.
Have you done it and give me the documentation so that we have a...
Right.
Our live rate is higher than it used to be. We won't continue to beat that for free.
I haven't seen the loss run, so if I saw the loss runs, I can say what you're...
Well, just, the number of suits per town has been going up historically.
Yeah.
Suits against town has been going up historically, and as, I don't know if we've ever discovered it, but even a suit you lose can cost you six figures.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's going to be even a suit you win can cost you six figures.
Anyway, that would be my thought on, as they look at that.
I'm going to put it up as a question.
Yep.
The only other thing that I had here, and I've gone, looked at your list, too, Dick, and this probably falls under downtown revitalization as much as anything, but I think it's a town-wide thing, and it's something to be worked on with the planning board. But I think we should be taking a town-wide view of town-managed 40B goals and plan. Do we want, for instance, if we do a town 40B, as Little Brook was, I believe, we can make them all affordable, and you get a whole bunch towards that count, and what it starts to do, once you reach your total, then people can't come in and demand they do a 40B, you've got control. We have a potential, no plans yet, of course, but we have a potential for some 40B housing downtown, if work in progress and things potentially happen there. There may be some other things, and instead of reacting negatively, reacting as we have been, and we certainly are in the Perkins Row thing, which is a huge concern to most in town, if we had a plan moving forward, for instance, should there be a, I guess the, Little Brook is administered by a town committee board, is something like, isn't it?
It's actually the Housing Department.
The town...
It's a state-run organization.
So local, state-run organization.
Okay. So is that the way to do it, maybe, and obviously hiring more personnel is not what we're trying to do, we need scrimmage, but is that, should we be trying to replicate that in an upper location? You know, if we could put in, I think Martha said that if we got 20, 20 40Bs, we would go from 7.3% to 9.1% in terms of meeting a 40B requirement. Not that far away from popping over 10%, and then we don't have to worry about the 40B question at all.
Do we have, did the zoning board adopt 40B regulations?
Not as far as I know. I don't even know what that would be.
The zoning board appeals, here's 40B plans. They should have adopted regulations for hearings. See if you can find that. That's critical, because when you go through that process, then you can impose certain conditions on there, but there are communities that have gaps in that, and they really need to adopt some 40B regulations if you're expecting somebody to file an application and go through the whole process, because it gives the zoning board of appeals more teeth in terms of what they can, they can negotiate.
Do we have that control?
The zoning board should have.
It sounded, it sounded as if the state could kind of bypass a number of the regulations that the average person...
They can bypass zoning, but in other words, the, if you have regulations relative to 40B, you can, you know, say, well, our regulations require that you meet at least some of these standards. You can't, you can't exclude them, but you can ask for higher standards. And again, when I went to, which we did not have so 40B regulations, and so I brought in somebody to, Copeland Page can write them up.
So it maybe doesn't need to be a big goal.
But they have to have a hearing.
Yeah, no, it has to be done. So I put it up on the list.
If you're going to have 40B projects, you need to have regulations. That's my opinion, and I am just, planning's not my big thing, but...
If I might add, though, that Martha's, one of Martha's, chairman of the planning board's thing is that all of the homes that are in town be credited to our low-income housing group, our stock, which is a bigger piece to try to identify because of laws that say they don't have to register as that.
Yeah.
Your turn, group homes, is it?
Group, I said group homes, yeah.
Yeah, no, they, they are. The state maintains a list, and those are qualified. There is a housing list. Have you gotten a copy of the housing list?
So, yeah, we have it, but they don't have an entire complete list because we know where all the homes are.
Then, then if you know where they are, you need to write to the state.
Yeah, that's, and that's part of what Martha's big thing is also with the 40Bs, is to be more accurate on...
The housing.
Housing stock that's within the...
So who is, is somebody handling that now, moving forward?
We're trying, I mean, to identify them and, you know...
You know, Glenn will know where everyone is.
Yeah. Yeah.
So Glenn can provide you a list.
Fire chief knows.
And the fire chief, yeah. That's good. Well, she should provide a list, she would know how many homes.
Yeah.
Or Glenn can work with her.
Rob, would you just please check through with them on that, just if they know that's a request and.
You essentially have, one way or another, you have 40B up here, some, yes.
I put it right here.
So you, you.
I got a piece, we can take it off.
We found that in it.
You got it, you got it.
They did not update it. But, but we sent that information in, they updated it.
Formally.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 there's a process for that.
Okay.
I can, I can help you with that.
Okay.
This is not final, but is it a start to encapsulating some of the stuff we can.
Down here on.
Tune in and so on.
Update long-range capital plan, I'm going to start meeting with the departments in terms of putting together their capital requests and Catherine is revising the forms and we're doing a whole spreadsheet, we're revising that and updating that. But I do, before you, Jerry, can I bring up one thing?
No, we have other things to do, they'll be quick, but you go first because your time is short.
I want to talk about, I just want you to know that we're going to have to recruit the treasurer. So that process will be undertaken, let's see, September, probably about the middle of September. Barbara's retiring the end of November. And so I'm going to undertake that process and the way I usually do it is have a group interview with people. So this person would interview with the accountant and myself and and other people this person would interact with. And then, then we go from there, so we're recruiting the treasurer collectively.
But the standard posting, internal posting, external.
We'll do all that, we'll do that, we'll do it. But she, she's pretty confident there's no one internally who can.
Yeah.
So we'll go through the whole process, but also I'd like to talk to you about the police chief replacement that's coming up shortly. Lynn said there was money set aside, but you've already squandered that on.
Well, we spent it for the town administrator. We had shed aside 10,000 for the police chief search.
But my thought is this, I had a discussion with the chief, he's got a lot of, he feels that Gary is a good successor to him. And we have to post internally anyway first. So I'm, I'm trying to gauge the opinion of the board about whether we should just go ahead with that process sooner than later and post the position and go with Gary. And then, then there will be this large transition time because the chief has a lot.
Your lap of your contract.
Yeah.
What will be expected?
He would become effective.
As a chief of.
And the chief, I think, still has a lot of time to take off. And I've also talked to the chief about asking Gary to put together a strategic plan for the department. So, and bringing him in at a time to talk to the board a little bit about a strategic plan. So we have some sense of his leadership. But it might be something you want to do before the new town administrator comes and stuff, then have that resolved. But if you want to go through a whole.
Kind of like eight months though. Yeah, from, from Saturday, we have eight months.
Well, how much time does Evan have off, when you said he's got a lot of time? Instead of leaving in April, what is his realistic?
I don't know, I should talk to him more about that, nobody's exactly sure, but he's done the end of April. It sounds like a lot of time, but if you go through a recruitment process, then it's like three months to recruit. Do you really want to recruit outside the department?
That's, I think, the.
Yeah, that's, that's the question.
That is the question. And, and that tends to be very disruptive if you have a very stable police department.
Can we go through the internal posting and the interview with Gary before deciding whether we're going externally with the search?
Yeah, you can do that, you can do that.
So we can see if we're comfortable and if.
Because.
Is it fun, Jerry?
I, I just feel like it'd be one more thing your new town administrator has to deal with in the thick of the budget and the capital plans and, you know, follow-up on the HR audit and all of this. I'm really trying to get through a lot of tasks.
Do we have the money to have them parallel each other to both be here at?
I don't know, I asked this woman down here who knows where all the money is.
Robin was saying have him come onboard.
Who's him?
Oh, no, he would stay as, he would stay.
Stay captain.
Captain.
Oh, okay.
He's already getting.
Oh, that should change.
He's already getting onboard. Notice he was with Chief Hagman at the town meeting and so on and shows up and comes every time.
Yeah, Gary actually did the whole budget.
Yeah, exactly, so I, I'm not worried about having to pay for an overlap.
That's what I thought you were suggesting.
No, 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 no.
I, I think.
You have the funds for that, yeah.
I think we avoid the need to worry about that. The transition in census, a good deal of it kind of complete if we chose to go to, I mean, with Gary.
It would just be helpful to have a conclusion on that before your new town administrator shows up. And that's just my recommendation, it's up to you, just let me know what you want to do because I'm in a personnel kind of mode here, I have all the job descriptions and.
A lot of changes all happening at once, there's a tremendous turnover here.
Yeah, and, you know, if you're going to be talking about a DPW and if that moves forward, your town administrator's going to be deeply engaged in that as well. So just trying to check things off before I leave.
So my sense, your input on this, is yes, go ahead with the internal recruiting, the internal job posting and so on, and let's do the process with Captain Hayward. And that keeps the process moving and we can have an even more thoughtful discussion when we finish that process on how we wish to respond, is that?
Yeah.
But I think we have to be careful how soon we do it, again, it's eight months out. It's, it's not that you can't do it, but it almost becomes awkward to do it too soon.
But if we could do it while Robyn is here, it makes this much more cheesy because she's pointing out there's a huge amount that's going to be resting on the new TA.
What, what do you see as the downside, Dick, to identifying him early on?
Well, so now you have a police chief and a police chief, so to speak.
The soon-to-be police chief.
Right, right.
But you have the chief who has been mentoring Gary all along.
Right, and who's very positive on this. From what he's been saying, the reaction of the department would be very positive and that there's no need for major change.
Well, you know what happens then? They're going to have to start a process for replacing the captain so they can start that sooner. Yeah, because every time you replace somebody, then there's a trickle-down effect. So that leaves a gap for them in the captain's position. I just think having a plan going forward is, is good. If you, if you can live with those choices, it's good to have that because then they can start grooming somebody to be captain, or maybe they have somebody, I don't know.
I think it would, I mean, planning ahead is a wonderful thing and given the fact some of this is going to take time to work out. If this is, at this moment, a relatively structured set of options, I think starting to engage in that is worthwhile.
Okay.
And I also think that it says something to the officers there, the rest of the force, that we're not letting this languish, we're not sort of sitting on our hands. I think there's an affirmation of their importance to us that they'd like to get this resolved.
So I will, I've asked the chief to have Gary put together a strategic plan.
Yeah, I think it's a good script.
And I'll sit down with him, go over it and talk to him. And then I think possibly in a post and, and I'm going to think it out a little bit more, but I think to have it concluded by the time the town administrator comes here, could be, you know, like November 3rd or something, then that's one less thing that that person has to worry about and then Gary can start forming a relationship with the new town administrator. Because the chief, you know, when we get ready to retire, we check out a lot.